It's two minutes after seven, it started. Okay, well, welcome to our meeting. This is the first meeting of the month, which is a business meeting. And the first point on the agenda is the public comments section, in which we invite you to tell us anything you have on your mind. But we ask you to keep it to five minutes. And then we'll have the business part of the meeting, where we will discuss issues and things that we need to approve and so forth. And if you have any questions about anything that comes up during the meeting, please feel free to speak to any of the school board members afterward. And then we will adjourn into executive session to consider questions around personnel and students and so forth, and personal issues. And then we will reconvene to vote on anything that comes up in the executive session that requires a vote. And you're welcome to come back for that part of the meeting as well. So without any further ado, is there anyone that would like to speak to us? The first point on the agenda is reports. We have one from Building and Grounds. As you, I guess, Chris, you're the only one that is not in committee who's here. Sorry. Both Rachel and Building and Grounds Committee. Sorry. Okay, Harry. Anyhow, we're in the middle of a capital project. And we've hired an architecture firm. And we've had some meetings with them. And they've gone through the school and looked over. We have a list of things that we want them to do. And they found some other things that they suggested we consider. We probably won't be doing them this time around, but we might put them on the list for the future. We were planning on a $5 million project. They came up with $20 million of repairs that need to be done and upgrades. They gave very conservative estimates. And we're in the process of reviewing them and seeing if there's other ways we can go about doing them that might be cheaper. For example, there's some issues on roof. And their estimate was to do the whole, reface the whole roof. But you can apparently do some x-rays of the roof. And you can find spots that have leakeded. And then just repair those spots rather than do the whole roof. And so there's a lot of, so we're early in the early stages of refining the list. And we will certainly, we've asked Gary to come, Gary may to come in September and give us a kind of a more detailed update as to what's on the list at this point, what we're considering, and other ideas that we might have for different things. And hopefully by later this fall, we'll be able to approve a final capital project that would commit $34 million. Anything else? Rachel?
And we'll have more information on that in a couple of weeks because they're going to, we're going to have another meeting and they're going to come back with some slight revisions. And there were some things that we could get possible funding for in a different way other than the capital project. So maybe I'll get 20,000 cut down to something to be for some other funds.
So we're a work in progress. And any questions?
No, not really.
Okay, moving right along. Vision. Could you all come up to the table maybe?
All right, I'm going to stand by this. I think we're going to take turns.
Oh, okay.
So I'll start. Well, they're not coming for it.
Oh, you want us all there at the same time?
Sure.
Or at the table. Let's do it. Okay, let's go.
Okay, so this is just a small representation of the many volunteers who've been working on the vision process for our school district. I've been co-chairing with Rachel Mason, who's not here today.
She is.
Hi, Rachel. And we've been working hard and felt like we were at a juncture where we wanted to present where we stood in the process and give the board a chance to weigh in as a unit, as well as anyone in the public who wants to understand a little more about where we're at. So I'm going to pass it to Debbie, who's been a great facilitator through the process and helped us tremendously steer the boat. So in the summer of last year, in August, the board determined that it was time to take a look at the vision of the district and the mission and the values. And we, at that point in time, brought a committee together. And the committee decided the first act would be to do a broad-based community survey, which we did in the fall and winter of last year. The survey included three questions. The questions are here as a reminder to everybody. And I think what was important about what the Vision Coalition did with the survey was not only make it available in paper and online, but members of the Vision Coalition were also at a lot of events throughout the fall and winter with a table, with offering people the opportunity for dialogue and to take the survey. We also did a QR code for the survey, which was very helpful when we had winter break and all of our college seniors or college graduates were back because we could just hand them the QR code and they could just scan it on their phones. And that was a very easy way to get their data. We also surveyed the students in grades five through 12. So, and, the last piece was members of the coalition went out to area businesses and had direct conversations about the survey questions with area businesses. So we tried to capture as many individuals and information as we could. We compiled all of that for those three. And in March, we had presented that information to the board. But here's just a summary of one of the questions that really helps provide some of the foundation for the work that the subgroups of vision, mission, and values have done. When we asked the question about qualities and skills that our graduates need, they really came, the responses came back into five categories of life skills, meaning can you balance your checkbook? Do you understand about how a credit card works? How a car loan works? Some of those very practical, functional things. Communication skills, both written and verbal, as well as presentation skills. Collaboration, how well do you work together with others, which is a key component of today's work growth. Problem-solving skills, how do you take the information and skills that you have and apply it to novel situations? And then responsibility and accountability. How do you, as an individual, make sure the way you are acting and moving in the world is a way that is helpful and growth-producing and positive? So those were the five general areas that the responses came back with. The other two questions around what are we already doing well and what could we improve become some of the tactical pieces, if you will, that will help frame some of the actions that the board may choose to take. And again, we shared all that with you in March. And then in June, talked about it a little bit more when they're together. So what I'd like to do now is just share with you information about vision, mission, or value. And we present this information in definition terms so that we all have the same foundation for looking at the work that we're doing. So a value is a foundational belief, the way in which we act every day, the way in which we conduct ourselves. The mission is what we do every day. What is our purpose? What is our reason for being? And a vision is where do we want to be? How do we become and grow into that next picture that we all agree is important for our district? Using these definitions, we took our Vision Coalition committee and broke up into three subgroups, a vision, a mission, and a value subgroup. Those subgroups have been doing work on their own. And what we're going to do right now is share with you from representatives of each of the group, the concept work that has been done. This is in no way a finished product. It is our work as of Tuesday night, this Tuesday night, August 8. So I'd like to offer the vision concept. And Mary Ellen is going to present that for us.
I'm going to stand here and be creepy, but...
So what is wrong with this slide? Is it just like...
It's just how you have, there you go.
Oh, okay, all right. Yep, so we have a little graphic there. I see how the thing...
Oh, I don't know where that thing went. It's, you know what, I don't know why it's not, nope, it's not there. I don't know where your graphic went.
Okay, well, imagine all kinds of hands.
Yes, it's all kinds of hands.
Third, middle block. So the Vision Subcommittee consists of Rachel and Debbie and myself. And we, we were looking, you know, one thing we did was look at lots of other schools' vision statements. And a lot of them were just a lot of like big words and vague terminology that doesn't really mean a lot ultimately. And we wanted to come up with something that was specific to our district and what, you know, what we specifically want to be, what we think we are special, what makes us special. So if you click on the concept, we just happened to be looking at a district that had, was working on a website. Debbie had met them at a conference in Tennessee. And I really was struck by, you know, just how, you know, forward, very upfront their presentation was. Rebuild, retool, restore. And thought, you know, do we really have to have a full sentence that nobody's really going to pay that much attention to? Or could we condense it? So that's why we ultimately chose these three, I guess you'd call them terms. And this is our, like the foundation to our vision, which is every learner, together, world-ready. And then, you know, with those terms, we have sort of fleshed out what we mean by that. So for every learner, we cultivate authentic learners by taking a holistic approach to education, not a one-size-fits-all approach. We are invested in the success of all our students. We provide a rich, challenging, and fun learning environment for every scholar that emphasizes relevance as well as rigor. We want all our scholars to graduate as independent, thoughtful, and engaged critical thinkers and continue on as lifelong learners. And under the concept of together, we are a rural school in a small community that is big on connections. And I think that's a good example of what makes us different and unique and special. Connections among families, students, teachers, administrators, and staff. This fosters an environment in which differences are appreciated and students feel included, supported, safe, and respected by peers and adults. And I'd just like to say, like, oh, with all of these, we worked really hard on a lot of the language and spent a long time talking very deliberately, not just the Subcommittee, but the whole coalition, about these, you know, what we wrote here and very specifically why we did it. So I guess we got one more, which is world-ready. Our scholars graduate having developed both the practical, intellectual, and social-emotional skills to ask great questions, critically process information, form their own opinions, work in teams, communicate effectively, learn from failure, and adapt to a world of innovation and rapid transformation. And I guess I just wanted to point out, like, we, you know, we had these three terms we came up with, they're a tagline, like a tagline. But like we kept, when we kept going back to what the surveys responses were, they all fell under those three concepts very surprisingly neatly. So if someone said, "Well, what about this?" Like, well, that's really under this concept of togetherness. So, so again, like we put, even though it's very simplified, we thought both that that's, that's can be strong to have a simple presentation or use of words. And then also, it really does distill down to everything that we've been talking about as well as hearing from the community. And I'm passing it on to Mission.
Well, Mary Ann really laid the foundation for how we got to what you see on this screen. She actually took some of my notes, even though she didn't see them. No, no, it's mine. You did a great job. And I was going to just say that how we got to this, and certainly the other components, is really looking at those survey responses and what was common? What do people value in our school community from the student's perspective, the parent's perspective, and of course, the folks who work here each day? Extensive conversation, lots and less conversation about what should we do every single day to make sure we're working toward that vision? And I'll read that to you. Every day in our school district, we foster a relationship-based learning environment. By removing barriers, we provide equal opportunities for all students to participate in an education process that incorporates academic achievement with out-of-classroom interests, talents, passions, and activities. We educate the whole child to become critical thinkers, culturally and socially aware adults. It was really, really important that we focused on the relationship. Without those relationships, students aren't learning. If they don't feel that an adult trusts, or that they can trust an adult and an adult cares about them, they're not going to learn as well. The equal opportunities was very, very large for us as well. We want all students to feel like they belong here at Canje Harry and that they all have the opportunity to share those interests, talents, and passions. It's not about like the cookie cutter person. It's we all bring something to the table. And really, this should really guide us in what we do every, every single day in our school and our school community. I feel like mine was easy because...
I think mine's easier.
Yours is easier. And this is Kathy, who she has the values.
On my committee with Ms. Ward and Mrs. Frau-Brouw, and we, again, took the surveys and just kind of found some commonalities in them as we went through them. Values, of course, are what we want. The students to do every day, the teachers to do every day, the staff to do every day. And the values that we found running through all the surveys were creative thinking, empathy, compassion, intolerance for others, cultural of social awareness, healthy, positive relationships among our community of learners, perseverance and grit through engaging learning experiences. And you can see with everything, the relationships all really kind of tag right through there. And I think that's one of the things that we really wanted to bring home. See, I told you mine was easier.
Pass on the...
Debbie, are we going to be able to get a copy of this?
Yes, I posted right up tonight on to tonight's meeting. So what's, what's next? Well, we know that the board has some work to do in terms of the overall responsibility for crafting the vision, mission, and values. We would offer that a consideration might be to host a community event where this information can be shared and with some facilitated table conversations with people who would be there. Of course, it would include food and childcare. Those discussions can happen and we can further refine understanding and definition of some of the concepts we've presented tonight. So that is our presentation. We would be happy, Mark, if we turn it back over to you for either some questions or facilitated conversation with the board and the folks who work here. So we can turn it back over to you.
I have some things to say about it.
We're going to go back and sit down if that's okay? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank the participants for doing this. I know that, you know, this was pretty quick to present, but I know how difficult this stuff is, especially when you talk about just trying to hash out the language and what terms you're using. So thank you for your work. I was impressed with how it was done.
I gave a lot of feedback on Tuesday. I think there's some, I think there's some more refinement that, you know, that, I like the direction that we're in. And I think we need to make sure that all of the pieces are supporting each of the major concepts of the district that we're going to be putting out there. So I think in my own mind, I think there's probably a couple of values that we need to still add. And so that's what I mean by tweaking. I think there's some tweaks that are still there. But I really like what we've gotten.
I want to thank you very much for the work you've done. It's, you know, something that's very dear to me and very important. And I'm also very impressed with how far it's progressed since the early, you know, the first few meetings that took place and what we were presented with last spring and what we see now is, you know, just five years ahead of where it was and much, much further along the road of where we want to be. I agree that it's, you know, that now is a time that we need to start getting some feedback from our constituents, both in the community and in the school. I think in addition to community meetings, I think it would really be important to have meetings with students and teachers and staff in the school. Because I think if they don't get it, then we'll see we have some more work to do. Because I think, you know, if this is going to guide our work, I think it has to be clear to people that read it, what it's, what the guidance is and how it really influences what they do every day. And so I think that will be the next challenge to see if that's, if what people are hearing or reading when they, when they read this. And I think, I think some things will, you know, I think probably we'll be surprised by some of the insights that we'll get, but I think that will be really important. A couple of small things. I said this before, also just for my own, you know, self. I think for us as well, you know, the board and administrators and so forth, you know, we really have to understand what does this mean if we accept this vision, mission, and values? What will it say that we should be doing, that we are not doing now? Or how should we be doing things differently? Because, you know, to put, I mean, all of these concepts are very worthy concepts and very, but I'm still, in my own mind, and I, and I, maybe it's just we need to have more discussion about it. You know, what will it mean concretely in terms of the work of our district? Of engaging the students and getting them to where we want them to be based on this? And I think we really have to, you know, really look at that because I think we've gotten very far along the road of, you know, what we want. Now we have to figure out what does this mean? You know, and that, I think, is still, in my mind at least, needs to be further, you know, worked on. Just one small thing, I, here in the vision, world-ready, it was one thing that I thought was missing from it. And like, obviously, it's my own, my own personal bias. But it was adapting to the world but not changing the world. And I think we want to have people who will engage in the world and change the world, make the world, you know, interact with the world to make it better. You know, be it like more than active, not just, you know, make, adapting you to it, but helping change it where it needs to be changed. And which gets to the whole concept, which at some point we're going to be discussing, not tonight, but of the possibility of, for instance, a community engagement requirement for graduation is something that I would like to see us discussing at some point, you know, some point along the way. And I would like to see that in the visions, in the, you know, in the vision statement, vision, mission, value statement. You know, that would kind of be saying that that's something that we feel is important.
That's one of the values that we talked about Tuesday, that probably needs to be added in.
But the bottom line is, great work, guys, and thank you so much. I think we're really moving along and, you know, we have a little ways to go. But I think this has been great progress and very encouraging and exciting for me.
I think we, you know, we did talk about that, about like being civically engaged. And I think that's the thing, like these words, if you look carefully, you'll find the answer to some of those. And in the mission, and maybe we need to state it more explicitly or differently. But in the mission concept, we talked about educating the whole child to become, among other things, a socially aware adult. And that was where we were thinking at Tuesday's meeting, where that, you know, ties into what you're saying as well.
Well, and again, as I said, I think a lot of the answer to some of those questions or issues would be, what is the perception of those who eat it? And, you know, what they hear when they see it or hear it? And I think that would be important for us. You know, in any further modifications, I would like to make.
A specific reaction I had tonight that I didn't notice on Tuesday for some reason is the together piece seemed very student-centered rather than collective environment. And I'm not sure why I saw it that way tonight, but just a comment back.
Which is?
The together statement under vision just struck me as very student versus the collective environment. I'm not sure why. I just, I didn't feel that way Tuesday. It struck me that way today. So I'd have to think about it more. I'm not sure why it struck me that way.
Yeah, that's sort of an important component of, sort of, feedback we receive from the community. So we want to make sure that's in there.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have anything further you'd like to say to us?
I just want to reiterate what you were saying. We've talked about Tuesday, that, you know, a lot of, the things that we're saying here, we have to be prepared to follow through on and walk the walk, not just talk the talk. And, you know, that is truly the major work that lies ahead to give meaning to all the work we've done thus far. So I think we do, you do have to look carefully at sort of what's being said and are you willing to follow through on those commitments?
I think, again, from the conversation Tuesday, we as a board probably in our retreat will need to talk about what does that really mean and are we comfortable with what that could entail? Because we definitely talked about some of that on Tuesday.
Just your information, we're planning to discuss the vision, vision, mission, value statements at our retreat we're having later this month. And so we will certainly, after that discussion, get back in touch with you and give you more in-depth feedback. Anything else?
I think, I think you said, Debbie, that I'm more positive about next step and a suggestion of public meeting. We talked about that on Tuesday. I think it would be good to maybe talk a little bit about how we feel as a board. I think it was in October, I don't remember the date. It was after the last...
October 23rd?
After the last open house is what they were thinking. And the concept was to use the open houses for each school as kind of the marketing of the actual event. So the event would be separate than the open house, which is a little bit different than where we were thinking earlier. But that seems to resonate. And we talked about maybe having a pasta dinner or something to, you know, encourage people to come out to it. So those details were talked about Tuesday. And I wanted to at least make sure that... So those details were talked about Tuesday and I wanted to at least make sure that kind of came back to the board so you kind of knew what they were thinking or talking about.
And as well, as I said, I think it could be important to get together a group of students and teachers as well in addition to that, uh, open house. Okay? Okay, you seem nothing else? Take it away, Debbie.
Three quick things this evening. Uh, we continue to interview candidates for the few remaining open personnel positions that we have. It seems like, um, we go on cycles where we either are doing a little bit of hiring or a lot of bit of hiring. This year is, is more than last year. Um, so we're preparing to implement our mentor program, which pairs our new staff with experienced teachers who will mentor them for the first year of their employment with us. And so we're currently, we've invited, um, tenured teachers to apply to be mentors as part of a mentor program that the district has had in place for quite a while. We are also successfully made the transition to our new technology support service, which is the cooperative technology services offered through NAREC. Our summer tasks include preparing new computers for use, reimaging computers and updating software. Um, we are also have add a request from our secondary level teachers to establish Gmail accounts for students so they can use Google Classroom. So that's happening for grades six through 12 this summer. Um, we also are, believe it or not, school starts in just a few short weeks. And, um, for opening day, we are finalizing our plans. We are absolutely thrilled, to use one of Stacy's terms, to have conscious discipline trainer Donna Porter and one of her students, um, former students, DJ Batiste, to speak to our staff about the importance that we in schools can play in the lives of, of students. And we're excited, and, and as exciting, he will be here the following day to talk with high school students during their opening day star activities. So that's really great and his message is one that's quite powerful and it's pretty much doesn't matter where you come from, but you can craft your own future and create your own space, or your own future. So, um, we're really excited about that opportunity to think about relationships, which is really what the theme is of the opening day. So those are just a couple of quick things.
Is that going to be Tuesday before school starts?
Yes, yes. It'll be in the morning. So, Mr. President, though, one thing is with the few remaining personnel positions, um, I'm requesting that the board come together quickly and Patty's got some opportunities to, um, consider the recommendations for the few remaining open positions that we have, perhaps the last week or last two.
Will those three of us come around?
We kind of looked, after all the interviews, we are, that's, what is it, freshman orientation? On the 30th and then after freshman orientation, maybe if we could do an executive session at seven?
Seven in the morning or?
No.
At evening?
Evening.
Does that work for people? That's Wednesday, the 30th.
Wednesday. Or if we could do a morning, I mean, if we add at least, it's up to-
I'm unavailable in the morning, so I'm up at, uh, seven o'clock, I should be available. It'll be a quick meeting, I can't imagine it being long.
Right, no, it'll, it'll just be exactly, you know, just the final point.
It's just the exact, that's it.
I can, um, only say, at class at six, so it couldn't be much of a second.
All right.
Could you do it at seven in the morning?
On Wednesday, I can, I don't teach until the afternoon, well, about noon on Wednesday.
Okay, so, and you could do it at seven?
No, no.
Seven P M.
P M, oh, sorry.
So it couldn't be much earlier than seven P M.
I could do it real early, before 35.
Well, we could do like a 7:15, I mean, it doesn't have to be at seven, I mean, it's not going to last for that long, you know.
Why don't we do it at 7:30, just to make sure we have time?
It's just the first week of school, so it's craziness plus I have class, so.
Does that work for you?
It's general mayhem.
I can, I can't do, no, I could do 7:30, I think.
In the evening?
In the morning or in the, it's not Monday.
All right, so why don't we aim for 7:30?
On Wednesday, the 30th.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, on the 30th.
Can you write along, um, board retreat? Well, there are, there are two things that seem obvious that we would want to do in the board retreat. One would be a vision statement and the other would be that self-evaluate, you know, reviewing the self-evaluation, um, and see what we can glean from that. So I, I'd hear people's thoughts and if they want, if that sounds good or do we want anything else added to it, um, or in place of it, you know, the floor is open for thoughts and, and ideas.
Just my own thoughts, I always find value in getting legal counsel or legal advice and sometimes this happens at board retreats or administrative type meetings where you invite, you know, whoever you're, you know, we've contracted with, sometimes they'll give you an hour or they'll go over important briefs. I don't know if we do that as a board or if we get, if we have the opportunities to communicate or learn, um, from lawyers about what's significant, what's going on, uh, to keep ourselves out of hot water. I always find that generally in my professional development, those are probably the most useful. And whenever I talk to other administrators or board members, they tend to really like that a lot because you learn a lot about, you know, what your legal responsibilities are. So really, it's a twofold question. I don't know if that's something that we've typically done as a board or if that's something that we would consider as a board. That's it.
Thoughts?
I've never done that.
Well, I can, I'll give you my own feelings about that. The, the attorney that we work with is Chris Landchamp. She's very accessible. She's, she's been more than happy to come and consult with us anytime we want, have any questions for her, either by phone or in person. I, I mean, if the majority wants to invite her, I, I'm a problem with that, but I don't really feel a strong necessity.
Generally, they'll, they have a presentation of what's, what are the hot issues, social media, transgender issues, things that will get us in hot water if we don't take care of it. So, um, yeah, however you want to do it, I'm open. I get the training generally, but, uh, I don't know if you all do or if we are, you don't have the experience of what's going on in the candy area specifically, any legal issues or anything that, again, can keep us out of hot water, make sure that we're doing the right things for kids and our staff and community.
I, I would say, um, in the world of business, I found those kind of things very helpful as well. Generally, I would take on, um, generally, it's just, uh, that's what's the same, the hot topics that they're seeing coming up and how should we deal with it corporately? And as we review policies, that's probably important. I know we get that input after we look at them, but it might be good for us to have insight into what policies should we potentially be paying close attention to. So I don't know, maybe, maybe our, I don't know if it needs to be done as a part of the board retreat, but, um, maybe we could have that as some presentation at some point. I, I do think one thing we do need to talk about is in executive sessions, our liabilities and that might be a good time to do with, you know, return, giving us kind of a high level, here's what delay and land is, is happening. Because of the board liability or something.
So, would that be an agreeable way to proceed, then, not have it in retreat, but have it as part of an exec at some point?
Yeah, possibly, or he, you know, like you were saying, it, it doesn't have to happen at the retreat, but maybe sometime in the future, it just depends, but executive session or another board retreat next year or, you know, whatever the case may be. Typically, I know like, like classes, they'll probably have, you know, for the NISBA, they'll probably have presentations I haven't looked at the schedule, but typically those are really good to go to.
Okay, so, um, are we happy with vision and self-evaluation?
Yeah. I think so, because, yeah, sure.
Generally have four hours, including eating dinner, so. Okay, one other thing I just wanted to, um, raise for people to think about, not to make any decision on this tonight, is, um, NISBA has a, a school board U where they do custom board retreats and, um, they do, um, they, they send someone and they can do it either for less than four, less than four, up to four hours or more than four hours. If you do more than four hours, you can go to another subject. And so what I'm going to do is, um, I'll link copies of this for everyone to have a copy of, look at it, see if you think, um, it's something that we might benefit from. And, um, if you, if you do think it is, what, they have to suggest some topics, although you can come up with your own. For example, they say district goal setting, we'll move on to that, but superintendent evaluations, roles and responsibilities, board members, team building, um, and, uh, additional requested topics, school board performance evaluation, communication skills, trust and conflict resolution, legal issues, um, executive session and open meetings. So, law.
Do they provide a facilitator as a part of that as a door?
And, uh, you know, the thing that looks attractive to me about it is you get the benefit of school board experience all along the state. And, um, so it might be something that we might want to consider, but I'll, we'll get a copy made of this and everyone can look at it and we can discuss it at maybe the September meeting.
I mean, they're, I, I think it's, I think it's helpful, um, particularly when we're navigating, I, I really think the vision, mission, values is going to take a little bit of help for us to work through and understand the, you know, when we're, when we're agreeing to it and proposing that out to the, to the district, what are the long-term implications of that? And I think it would be helpful for someone to help us at some point through that process. Or someone.
All right, so, um, we'll, we'll discuss that probably in September, I'm just thinking about trying to set it up, because they're booked pretty far ahead, so we'll probably do it later in the fall.
All right, so the August 22nd date is off?
Oh, time.
Not for this, but.
No, we're going to have a, a retreat on the 22nd to discuss vision and self-evaluation.
Oh, and then you're going to have to do this separately? Oh, okay, gotcha. All right, okay.
Uh, just one other thing I wanted to share with you, before the board retreat, we're going to tally all the self-evaluations, um, so that you'll have, each of us will have a, you have your yeses, no's, don't knows. And also each of the essay questions will be listed separately with all the answers on, you know, consecutively. Yeah, so that, and you'll have that prior to the meeting, so you can go through it in, you know, formats and ideas. Okay? All righty, so, uh, next is the curriculum committee. Well, this is something that, you know, you've been talking about, Scott. And, um, I, I asked Debbie to see if she could find some examples of curriculum committees out there, because I thought it'd help us to see what, what they are and, you know, what some of the things that they do are and so forth. And so I guess we're, we're discussing this part.
Yeah, I, I looked at the, the information, thank you. I have a limited knowledge base of our, um, how our curriculum is developed out here. I, my personal opinion is some of these, I think, were more extensive than we were in our district. The, the, the foundation of where I've been coming from is it's clearly one of the responsibilities of the board to be aware and approve curriculums in the district. Not that we're to be the curriculum experts, but we're supposed to be aware of what's, what the instruction is and supportive of, yes, we agree that's, we support that direction for, for our district. And, um, up to this point as a board member, we've never really discussed any of that, so it's clearly a missing gap in my mind. And I don't know what the, the reason I started the way I did is I don't know what the right timeframe would be for our district, but it would seem like if we had a curriculum discussion two or three times a year in the right time of the year from a calendar perspective, that would probably be enough, but I don't know what that would look like for our district.
What do we do for curriculum mapping here? Do we use Atlas or what?
Use Atlas, yeah.
Just even a review of that, not that you're evaluating it, but just so you know what's being taught generally at what grade level, what, you know, what month. Which, it's just a curriculum map of what generally is being taught, or that's really what you taught.
So maybe, maybe the most sensible place to start would be to ask Debbie to prepare a presentation for us on just, on how the curriculum is formulated and, um, what the timeframe is, timeline is.
There are some, there are some times.
I'm sure there is.
As, as we get ready to do course catalogs, there are opportunities there as teachers do work on, um, looking at assessments or different projects. But there are some times of the year that it lends itself more towards here's where things are developing, here's what's happening.
And not only the time, but the how has it developed, you know, where did the ideas come from and so forth. Or just to give us a sense of how curricular ideas are developed and when. And then after that, after that presentation, then I think we'd be better informed to-
How should we proceed?
So, if I may ask, because I've started some charts, to calendar that with some of our, with a timeframe, so you have your meetings that are the regular business meetings, could be a report there, could also be part of one of the second meetings, the informational meetings. The next one, the first one of which is, um, September 28th, the one following, that's the informational, the one following that October 26th. So I would suggest that we calendar that now so things don't get lost in the mayhem and shuffle.
All right, so would that be agreeable on the second meeting in September?
Okay. All right, that's September 28th.
Okay, anything else on curriculum at this point? So, I want to consent and approvals. Where's the, oh, consent approvals. So we can do A through H as one. Would someone like to propose a consent agenda for A through H? We can talk about any individual one, but we'd be able to vote on all of them. Second? Any discussion?
Want the discussion one by one or?
I'd, uh, hit one.
Go ahead. As I was reading the non-resident tuition policy, I reflected on our Tuesday meeting. I had read it before and I went back and read it again. I think that as we come to terms with what we see the vision and mission and values are for our district, we're going to be, need to be very cognizant of what that means with outside district students and what we're saying we'll provide to them. Because I'm not sure that can be done for zero from the things we've been discussing in some of these meetings. So, I don't think that's- So, I don't think that's an issue for this year, but I just wanted to raise that so that we're, we've got our eyes open.
Anything else?
I had a question, which I don't expect, you know, an answer exactly today, but roughly, how much extra aid do we generally get for out-of-district students, whether, if we can do it per student for, I don't know what aid that would be, or, you know, whether that's considered attendance, I just don't know.
Yeah, we, we, we get aid for the student because they attend here, but Mrs. Schaefer would be able to provide that.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's if, it's broken down by student, or per week, per month, per year, I, you know, I'm just kinda curious, that's all.
We can have, we can have, when Mrs. Schaefer returns, we can have her do that, or we can track it for this past year, at least give you that, based on the number of students we have.
Okay. And I had, were you done? Do you have any other questions? I had a couple of questions, which just really got to help me learn and understand. I know there was, you know, the home healthcare aide, or the nurse that's on the bus, I saw that it's, I know it's a, I know there's probably a lot of way down there. How, I just wasn't sure how long that was, was that all day, or was it just on the bus? Do you know offhand?
The, the home health care services on the bus is for the bus.
Yes, and that, but is that for just from point A to point B, and then you're done? So we're looking at maybe two hours then, is what we're looking at.
But the person's on the bus coming home too.
Correct.
Yeah.
It's, it's on both.
So have we, I mean, you probably have, it's probably easier just going with contracted service, so you know it's reliable, you've got, you know, subs if whoever's not there, but have we looked at just hiring somebody?
We did, last year, when this child entered the district as a kindergartner, we actually interviewed people, we went through all of that process, and then we looked at other options, and in the end, this became the best, most reliable, though it is expensive option for this particular student.
All right, I kinda figured that.
Yeah, no, it's fine, you weren't, you weren't here then, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. And then I also know that we saw that there was an expansion of a bus route, or additional bus route. Just, you know, I know it's probably just because of the, the way the kids are, you know, either more kids in a certain area or less kids, and you're just kinda redistributing. Is there anything significant with that, or, or no, just?
No. It's the AgP Tech added in, we have a few more Amish students that need transportation, also our district students who are in out-of-district placements.
Okay.
I didn't realize we were going to those.
No, that's in the best.
That's the next one. When you started talking about the tuition rate, I'm like, why do you know we're talking about that either? That was my door, so I'm sorry.
Sorry, no worries, we're good.
Let me back in, I would've been fine.
You got your answer ahead of time.
Yeah, thank you.
I did have some things, again, I didn't expect to answer for, but it, and when I read through some of the bills, it made me ask a couple of questions. And one was about cell phones, because it seems like we're paying a few different cellphone providers, so I'm assuming, and then the, the one that made it really trigger was we paid for somebody's phone to get fixed, or phone, I don't remember. So, that made me go, oh. I was just curious to make sure we had a specific policy around who's eligible for a cellphone, what the terms are for that, et cetera. And I'm not asking, I just wanna make sure there's something in place, because I know from the labor side, there's been a lot of discussion around, well, if you have somebody on the end of a cellphone, we can call them anytime, then that's an implication to what their status is, and so I just wanted to make sure that we had a formalized process around that.
There is a board policy around cell phones. It may need to be reviewed, I would, it may be one of those we wanna take a look at, or the policy committee would wanna take a look at, again, just to make sure if there's different conversations happening now around employees with cell phones, that our policy covers that.
Okay. The other thing I was surprised about, and I'm sorry I didn't get this one to you guys in advance, so if we can just get an answer back, I wasn't, it, it wasn't clear why we were paying all the other school districts twenty-some thousands.
Oh, yeah, that's easy, that's the AgP Tech grant. So we are the holders of the AgP Tech grant, and that's the reimbursement.
Got it, perfect, thank you.
No worries.
They were big, big bucks, and I was like, hmm.
Hmm, why is that?
Yeah, those are, those are not districts that we have students coming from or anything.
If you look at the, at the top, one of the clues for the future will be at the top of that warrant, it's the federal fund warrant, so that tells you that those are our grants.
Okay.
So when you see that, then that's something that's coming from either the title grants, the AgP Tech grant, or the special ed grants, which are the three we have.
The last thing that I had as a question on this was, I saw the FAMTEC surveillance, and I just wanted to know how they fit into this, make sure all the components of the video and all that stuff that we're talking about in the rest of the financial, I forget what we're calling it, sorry, I have a mind blank, to make sure that we looked at what we already have and what those costs are, and mapped that as a part of what we're planning and all of that.
Actually, those are the new bus cameras for the new buses.
Ah, okay, all right, so that would be a piece, and is that integrated, is that filmed on the camera, or can people watch it?
Yes, people can watch it, I don't, I think there are DVRs on the buses, because...
Does it go wireless, though?
It does not go wireless, it does not go wireless. Harold has to bring us something when we take a look at it. But those are the cameras for the new buses, under the new buses.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions on the bills, on the July 28th, it's $4,000 to Parky Techs? Parky Techs?
Parky Techs is our playground, so our playground.
Oh, figured that.
I, I, I thought so, but I never, I don't remember, ever seen that before, though. Okay. And then also that same bill, Utica National Insurance, $400,000, what is that?
That's our annual premium for all the insurance that we get from Utica National.
And what kind of insurance do we catch from that?
That's our property liability, I just wanna make sure I have it right, student, student insurance.
Bus insurance.
Bus insurance, I said property, vehicles, students, liability.
Moving on to treasurer's report, this is something I'm just drawing a blank on, what is the reciprocal account?
Is that the account that we...
I can wait till next month for the year.
No, but is that the account we did last year, remember when we did that account last?
If I remembered, I wouldn't be asking.
The board, it's, the, ah, you're gonna use the payment, which page are you on? It's the fourth one here, okay. Yes, this is, remember last year when the board chose to adopt a different account with MBT, I wanna make sure I have it right, that...
To get more interest.
To get more interest, because you will notice, the way I always remember that it's the reciprocal account, is that $24 is a lot more interest than some of the other accounts that the district has.
I just didn't remember that we call it reciprocal account.
I know, and when you said that, I was like, okay, there is a way, I always remember, and that's how I always remember, mainly because you, you, the past have shared, yes, have shared about the lack of interest in our accounts.
Okay, also in the treasurer's report, the general fund, there was one item that we received, and Eaclemston sponsorship.
Yes.
I was wondering what that was about.
You may have noticed that there are some signs coming into the high school, and there's a couple around the community about no texting and driving. Michelle's graphic arts class last spring, do you know where you were in that class this spring?
No, I was saying, I'm next.
Next year, okay, okay. They, she worked and got a grant from Jaxlin Associates to create those banners in a campaign. We have some things.
Yes, I, I, yes, I'll look at it.
Yes, we, actually, we have some things for you that are a product of that campaign. So she received that award to produce the banners and produce the things we're going to give you. Okay?
School lunch, we put $50,000 into that fund, and my question is, do you like this to me?
I will have Mrs. Schaefer prepare a report for us on, for you on that, okay? I can't answer that, I can answer other questions, I'm lucky, so I'll have Leah follow up with that.
I didn't figure we'd get an answer tonight.
And they're for your take.
For us?
Yes.
These two?
Yes, so that is what the grant offered, and the students designed them? And again, if you come into the, this high school, and if you go by Betty Beavers on the thruway, you'll see a big banner that was produced by the graphic arts class.
Oh, you got it, okay.
So now we should go on to board committees?
Yes.
Okay, so, any other questions?
Just a couple things for, let me get back to us on, I didn't know what Santan...
Santander?
Santander leasing was.
That's, that's the leasing company for the buses.
Oh, which have a different company, okay. And CPI, what does that stand for?
Crisis Prevention, and that's the training.
I knew it wasn't the CPI I knew, because that was a coal scale thing.
Yeah, no, it's Crisis Prevention Intervention, something like that.
Perfect, how was that?
Okay, so the move in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Before we go on to the other approvals, I noticed there's something that was missing from the agenda, which I never noticed while I'm sitting here, which is a report from you. Is there, it's, it's, just two things I guess I would like to say.
I love that because we asked your, we asked your best advice, but you go ahead. Sorry, just wanted to know.
If, if there's any questions or any comments that you'd like to make, please feel free to make them, number one. Number two, one of the things that we've talked about briefly is, we're trying to figure out with your input, if there's anything we can do to help you to be more effective in your role as student representative. And so you don't, again, have to answer that right now, but if you can think about that and come up with anything that we can do to, you know, to help you to be more effective and, and do your job the best possible, please let us know.
It definitely will, right now, I really don't have too much to say, because school hasn't started yet, all my friends are on vacation, and I haven't seen anyone else in the school. So I definitely will, I'll, I'll talk a lot more when I do get back to school and stuff, and, yeah, I will definitely think about things that I could, you know, use from the board to make me more effective.
Are you really not going on vacation?
Pretty much, summer dance has consumed my life right now, recital's tomorrow, so then I'm gone.
For you, you have a few weeks then.
Yeah, a few weeks, and then right back to dance, so.
Where's the recital?
At the volunteer fire department, actually, at, in the, like, I don't know, at the upstairs area, I guess.
Okay.
Oh, we can't do it?
Yeah.
Is it open for, to the public?
Yes, it is, just by donation.
What time?
Seven, yeah, seven.
Okay, and that's tomorrow night?
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Okay, so moving on to approvals, non-resident tuition rate, do I hear a motion to approve a zero non-resident tuition rate?
That would be a commission, a second.
Okay, discussion?
I'm sorry, I just had this thought, when I read the policy, we should relook at that one, we should put it on our list, because I think the bullets that stated who should have it free, didn't really address out of district, if it was students of teachers and stuff like that, so we might just...
Can I, you know, just go ahead, Paul?
Sorry, just made me think of that.
It only took me five years to notice. Any other discussion?
I, I was gonna say, I read that, but for some reason, I thought that it, it was spelled out later on, but maybe not. Because I, I remember as I was reading it, and I had the same thought that you did, and then as I...
I, I think it's somewhere else, but we're probably gonna have to rework that a little bit, so it's very obvious.
Yeah, if, if we caught that kind of perusing through it quickly, then...
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Motion is zero. The 2017-18 HF embosses base contract, do I have a motion? Is it? Okay, discussion?
When we say base contract, I know there's a lot of things we have embosses, what do we mean by that?
It's all of the things that were included in our original commitment form.
Services?
In their services.
So this is, we should think about this as, this is the fixed services piece for them, right?
The amount is not always that static, for example, already, although this is the base contract, there's already going to be at least a little bit of a reduction from a special education aide and a special education student that were built into the original commitment form, that won't be part of the build form. So this is just your, really your starting point contract.
So in the pieces that are strictly services, in other words, not population dependent, right?
Yes.
What did, what did their increase wind up being? Have we looked at it that way?
Leah could probably give you that information, but it's going to be dependent on service. So, for, so for example, food service, which we contract with embosses for, may have a different rate of increase than our technology services, so it really would depend on the cluster of services. Overall, this base contract is a, is smaller than last year's.
Is that, because there's a lot of pieces in this, right? Is that because of their true base services, or is it because we don't have something in there that special needs student isn't there anymore, or something like that?
Correct, well, actually, this is just, the service piece, that price tends to remain, or that cost, very static. The flexibility piece becomes if, for example, we don't have ENL services, we had them a year ago, we don't have them in this base contract, because we're going to do it with our own staff, English as New Language Learners, or Second Language Learners. So that, it's that kind of thing, like every year, we go through every single one of the services with a fine tooth comb, and then make adjustments. If embosses personnel change, perhaps we get a different person in a position that we use, their cost may be less, so it's those kinds of things.
Are there any other, I, thank you for reminding us about the English language one, are there any other shifts of what we've taken over versus contracted out?
No, that's the only one.
And what is that cost-wise to us? Would it cost us from embosses versus what is it costing us now?
We're using existing personnel, so I don't know that there is any cost specifically, because we...
Well, we shifted that person.
We shifted the service.
No, 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 we shifted that teacher, too.
Correct, correct.
So it is a cost.
Yes, yes, yeah.
So...
I'll have to go back and dig, I didn't have my budget stuff with me, let's do that as a follow-up, we can do that as a follow-up.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
Because those are the right things to be looking at, you know?
Yeah, and we did.
Depending whether we outsource stuff or bring it in, based on what those cost changes are, are becoming, and what our usage becomes, in some cases, our usage might go up and makes it worthwhile for us to do it ourselves.
Sometimes it's just a question of dependability as well.
Right, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Motion carries? Okay, next up is establish a two-hour bus driver position. The expiration is under executive content. And first of all, you have a motion?
A second.
Want to take a moment to read the explanation?
The question I had was whether this also brings with it benefit obligations based on the personnel that are working extra time.
The positions will be posted, because that's how the positions work. However, in the bus garage, there is also a seniority way to look at the positions that have been filled that have been historic for years.
That's the way it's gone?
That's the way it's gone. That's the past practice for a long, 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 long time. If my memory serves me correctly, the person that would do this already receives benefits, so there is no benefit cost. I was looking at pages to make sure I had the right person ahead.
I just wanted to make sure they weren't. I'm only looking at an hour of each piece, and then there's this $10,000 thing going on.
Right, no, there is not.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. We have a new bus driver position. Expand bus driver position. Do I have a motion? Questions, comments?
Similar question on this one.
Similar answer.
Because it's... Somewhere in there, there's got to be, if they're only doing a three-hour run, unless they're doing a two-hour.
No, it's a three.
But at three, they're getting benefits, is how it is.
Because of the step that they're on.
Got it. It passed the salary.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So, and I'm also assuming that it's in, like, an hour in the morning, hour in the afternoon, and that's, or hour and a half, and that's where you get the three dollars. It's like split.
The current one, but then with the addition of Victory Christian Academy and some of the extra amics that have moved in, so it would be two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon.
It's already passed the three-hour threshold?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Letter E, bus routes and drivers.
A second.
Any questions or comments?
The only question I had was, is this... I don't know the bus routes from last year, so is this relatively constant?
Yes, there are no changes.
There are no changes.
Okay. That was, I didn't really feel like I had a reference point.
Right. And the only time they really do change is, like, if you have one family that lives on one of the roads, and they graduate out, and then he...
Right.
Adjust it, but typically, they're just been the same.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying. KF, over contract agreement with SEI Group. That's the architectural firm doing the capital project. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Questions, comments?
I can't remember. You had, like, two or three, I think it was three architect firms. It was one of the three. I just can't remember. Which one was it? Do you know, like, what was their...
SEI. They did the, they did the porticoes over all the entrances.
Yeah, I know, right, when you...
Yeah, I knew that would...
Oh, we're not doing those.
Yeah, but I knew which one you were talking about.
I do have some information. There was one piece, we had Gervin and Filazzo, Patrick Fitzgerald reviewing the contract. There was one piece in the contract that he has asked SEI for more information. We have not heard back as of this afternoon that they have answered that question.
So, should we hold off on...
I would, yes, I would recommend that we get the answer to the question. The answer is if the project went over forty-four months, that they would be paid extra. And there was a question about that, so they recommend... I was meeting, I was hoping to hear from Patrick, that he had talked with them. We have not received information as of this afternoon at five o'clock, so I would suggest perhaps that we table it until maybe the end of the month. Like, when we do the personnel piece, we could maybe bring it in.
Okay, you have a motion to table?
Sure, man. I'll second one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying. Okay, so we'll table it till the thirtieth. Bus replacement reserve fund, do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Questions, comments?
I sent a question in on this one. I know we've covered this, but I couldn't remember how this worked.
We tried to provide some additional information.
Was it in there now?
Yes, yes. It was in there on Tuesday, and I meant to go over everything.
I see that. I'm doing that now.
Yes, so please take a moment, and then see how well we did with careful planning.
I didn't go back and read the things I already read.
That's okay.
So, it's the A portion that makes the numbers different? Am I interpreting this right?
Yes. It's based on fifteen sixteen. The expenditures are based on sixteen, seventeen. And that's why your numbers are different.
Yeah, that just didn't make sense. We're reimbursing something, but the numbers aren't different.
Okay, any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion approved. Home healthcare services agreement, can I have a motion?
Motion. A second. Is this the same vendor that we used?
Because I made it, that one, I made a document. Let me see if I can...
There it is. It just took a long time.
Yeah, because I'm putting it as a Word document, not a...
I think that, but it's not a...
I know, I'm sorry. You write it down.
And the scope didn't change either from the last time we... Because it wasn't that long ago that we looked at this.
No, it has not changed.
And their service has been fine?
Very reliable.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Home healthcare services, substitute nursing services. Do I have a motion?
I'll second it.
I'll pick.
Questions, comments?
Do we ever use this service for just in-house? What happens if we've got a coincidental thing where all of our nurses are out?
That's, our first route is to, is that they go through HF MBOSE's to see if, through the subgroup. If not, then we do contract with them, so that we have a nurse on premises.
What do we do for field trips? Do we send nurses for anyone, or just a little?
No, we don't. The buses have first aid kits. If it's a field trip where there is a student who would require medical attention, we do that. And we've done that before.
Yeah, I kind of figured it out.
So, this is the, this is the substitute in our building, right?
Correct.
I got confused. I thought at the beginning, you were asking about, I thought this was substitute for carrying on the bus.
Oh, no, no. This is that if our nurse...
Yeah, that's what I thought when I read the first time.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, okay, motion carries. Next is the home healthcare business associate agreement. Do I have a motion?
Motion. A second.
This agreement just states that both parties will follow HIPAA rules when dealing with student medical issues or medical issues.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. And finally, the 2017-18 tax levy. The proposal is for zero percent tax levy. Do I hear a motion?
Motion. A second.
Any questions or discussion?
We'd just like to note that our expenditure rate is, to budget, is the highest we've done.
Yeah, congratulations. Constantly going up. It's great.
We've been working on it. But interestingly enough, for the second year in a row, our revenues came in higher. And this happened, this isn't a bad thing.
Yeah, I know.
It's not, except that it does impact our fund balance. And now that we have two years where revenues have come in higher than our strategy predicted, Leah and I would recommend that the finance committee meet to really delve into this a little deeper, and to really look at our revenue projection strategy.
Did we get a mysterious check again?
We did not. What we got was BOSI's aid that was different. And in the, at the bottom of the sheet, we have some one-time revenues factors that came into play. So, it was BOSI's. It was a worker's comp payout for a case that we had opened.
And it got closed.
And it got closed, so we got reimbursement for that. So, you can see what those one-time revenue factors were. It's not a bad problem to have, but it's a problem that on the revenue side...
No, but it screws up our strategy.
Absolutely, on fund balance. So, we recommend the finance committee meet to really delve into this a little bit deeper, and we need to start thinking about our strategy for revenue projection.
Are the auditors going to come in again like they did last time? When is that? I can't remember.
They're done. The auditors completed their preliminary work last week, so more towards the beginning of May, September, they'll come in and give us a preliminary report, the finance committee.
That's last year. That's where Carol and I had the discussion with them about the strategy, and how much money, and that sort of stuff. So, I'd suggest that we try to have that same conversation again.
So, while we are very excited that our expenditures into budget are getting really tight and closes, and that's something that the board has been working on for a number of years, and we've been, we've been working towards that for a number of years, we now need to address the revenue side in a different way, with a different strategy.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, same thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying, zero tax. Can I have a motion to recess into executive session?
Motion. A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Can I have a minute, Bill?